I don't know why your name is on mine, but we figured that went out Jake, it took us a while.
Yeah, I um, I I'm trying to figure if I can rename you. It doesn't look like I can. If you make me co-host, I probably can, Christine.
I can, yeah. So actually, you're the one on the bottom. Okay, so please just a moment.
And Rich, you may be able to move your cursor over the three dots and then in your own picture and then rename yourself.
Okay.
You should be co-host now.
Yeah, I got him. I'm gonna rename him right now.
Okay.
All right, Richard, all set?
Yep, great.
There we go.
I'm watching the attendees just to see if there's anyone who needs to come over. All right.
Hello, John.
How are you?
Good. Let me see.
Hi, George. It's Tara.
Hi Tara.
How are you? How's everybody?
Good.
Uh, let me see, Jake, we we have Tara, John, and me on the committee, and we're gonna need four for quorum, is that correct?
I need to look. I have five on the committee.
We're missing Molly, Sean, and Steve.
Right. Well, shall we wait for a few minutes here? We do have a quorum, then. We just need five. Well, we'll see.
Steve just came on, so you're good.
Yes.
Hi, Steve.
Hello.
Hi, Steve.
Hello, everyone.
Are we expecting Lucy, Jake?
Lucy is here.
Oh, she is. Okay.
Good. Well, it being five o'clock on Thursday, July 14, 2022, I'd like to call the Operation Subcommittee of the Eight-Town-
Recording in progress.
It being Thursday, July 14, 2022, at 5:00 PM, I'd like to call the Eight-Town Regional School District Planning Board Operations Subcommittee to order as posted. This meeting will be by remote attendance only, and it will be audibly and visually recorded. A quorum of the Operations Subcommittee is present. Tara White, Steve Bannon, John Silbert, and George McGurn. So the first order of business on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of May 24, 2022. Do we have a motion to consider these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion being made by Tara and seconded by John is now on the table. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'd just like to observe. I think they were excellent minutes, so thank you for whomever was responsible for those. And the next item on our agenda is-
I think we need a vote, George.
Your roll call, yeah.
Thank you very much. We do indeed. Let me see, Tara, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, George, yes, the minutes are adopted as proposed. Thank you for reminding me of that rather important detail, Lucy. The next item on our agenda is the election of Subcommittee Chair. As the minutes we just adopted suggest, since I did not vote in favor of the preferred option at our last meeting, I thought it more appropriate that I resign as Chairman of this Subcommittee. And so I would like, as my last official act as Chairman, to ask my colleagues on the committee to nominate a Chairman to take over as Chairman of the Operations Subcommittee of the Eight-Town Regional School District Planning Board.
I'd like to make a motion to have John Silbert be Chair.
Second.
A motion being made by Tara White and seconded by Steve Bannon is on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I shall take a vote. Tara, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Uh, George? Yes. The motion is adopted unanimously, and congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you. I uh, I will take on this heavy burden from you, George.
My shoulders are lighter already. Thank you.
And I thank you for all of your service up to now, and I trust that you will continue to be as much a part of this as always, so I appreciate that. We all do.
Thank you.
So I understand we have a six o'clock meeting. I'm sorry, yes, a six o'clock meeting that you folks have to go to-
Yep.
-in another town. So I'm just gonna try and move this along as quickly as possible and go to the next item on the agenda, which is an update on transportation, and hand it over to Jake.
Thanks. Thanks, John, and thanks, George, also, for your good work up to today. So very briefly, we have an align with us today, Rich LeBrie, who is our consultant on the transportation study that the last meeting reviewed, and you authorized moving forward with the RFP. The RFPs came in, and the board ultimately approved the application by Rich LeBrie. Rich and I have been going back and forth for, I don't know, probably a good six weeks now, and he is working to put together a final product for us that is probably about a month away. I'm saying that relatively comfortably, but there's good works happening. As you all recall, the RFP was really an attempt to go deeper on the transportation work that we had done in the initial phase, and really look very specifically at the addresses of children in our district, and then really evaluating drive times, looking at a couple of different configurations specifically related to the preferred model. So I've asked Rich, recognizing that it's really unfair for me to give him too much to do tonight, because he's really just in the throes of it, and I'll be honest with you, we did have a little bit of back and forth getting the the software basically purchased. And part of that was due to the fact that we heard from you all that it would be really great if after we used the software, it was available to the districts. And so we ended up writing a contract on the software that makes that possible. And I appreciate all the folks who helped to make that go. So while Rich will be using it intensely over the next, you know, month or so, it will then be available to the districts if they choose to use it. So-
For a year, for a year.
Yeah, for a full year.
Subscription agreement, so.
Thanks. So I I think that that was a request from the from the Subcommittee, and we're really glad to have honored that and made that happen. So Rich, right now, is doing a lot of work, and I just asked him to maybe do a five, six, seven minute update on where he's at and what they're working on with the idea that the next time that we gather together, we'd be looking at a draft report. So, Rich, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. First, let me just give you a brief background of where I where I come from and what I've done. So it kind of sets the stage of how I proceed with looking at transportation. I was a former collaborative director, Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative, which is the seventh school district outside of Springfield. And while there, we developed our self-operated transportation system for all seven of our school districts. When I retired about 12 years ago, we were running about 270 buses and vans, doing everything with regard to transportation, including regular special ed, in district, out of district, athletics, and all of it. I did spend, as part of that period of time, I spent five years in Berkshire as the Director of the South Berkshire Collaborative. So I'm pretty fully aware of the school districts and a lot of the demographic information with regard to South Berkshire County. Since I retired, I've been doing consulting. I've been, as you probably saw from my proposal, I've been literally all over the country. And uh, and but I certainly have an affinity for South Berkshire, having spent five years there. And so that's why when Jake originally called me about about six or seven weeks ago, he and I shared a number of conversations before I even applied for the respond to the RFP, and I was I was happy to help as best I could. So having said that, as Jake mentioned, we received our digitized map on on July 7th, basically a week ago. And we're in a position now of gathering the student information electronically from the two school districts to load our map with all of the student data. Once that's done, we've already collected a lot of the data that we need to to build our templates. And the templates basically will start to look at the configuration of vehicles, a number of vehicles that come out of the various iterations that we're looking at for transportation, so that we can make a cost comparison between the current cost and future cost of other options as we as we look and develop them. We're about on schedule. Jake, did you share with them the timeline?
Rich, I didn't. So if you could just sort of just sketch it out verbally-
Oh, okay, all right. Between uh, between uh, July 7th and the 14th, which is today, we're loading the map and determining the data requirements that we have. That did not happen today. Hopefully, it will happen tomorrow. And from there, we locate the schools, we put into bell schedules, the fleet information. We determine our revised bell schedule and transportation tier times, because one of the things that's gonna need to happen is with Southern Berkshire, there's gonna need to be a change in bell times as you look at bringing all of the high school students to the central location at Monument Mountain. And so once we develop the routes, we'll know what the optimum bell schedule should be to make all of that happen. In the meantime, we've collected all of this information from each school district. We've also just completed the design and a cost estimate for a centralized transportation facility, which would be located presumably in Great Barrington if you were to choose to become self-operated for school transportation as opposed to continuing to contract for it. One of the requirements of the of the RFP was to was to look at that. And there are two options. You can do it by hiring your own drivers and buying your own buses, or you can, because you were affiliate members of the Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative, they could choose to operate that on your behalf under the affiliate membership. So we've got templates built to cost out all of that. One of the issues we had was that Berkshire Hills uses Power School for their student management information system, and Southern Berkshire uses Reddicker. So we have to rely on Tyler technology to actually meld those two so that we can do routing across both databases. And they indicated that they could do that. It's not rocket science to do that, but it would take them a day or so to turn that around. So that, once we download this data from each of the the districts, then that has to go to Tyler to meld into a single database, primarily for the for the high school students, so that we can develop the larger the larger map and bring those together. We expect to do Iteration 1 on or around the 24th of July. 10 days from now, we should be ready to have run Iteration 1, which for us becomes the benchmark data. Iteration 1 will be the current transportation routes in the system, pretty much being run as they are being run now. But what it'll do is it'll allow us to develop from that software a basis of metrics that we can use as our benchmark data. And then as we go to Iteration 2, which would be around the 29th of July, we would then be able to extract the metric data from a bell set of routes. Those Iteration 2 being all the students at the at the high school and the middle school and elementary school students attending the schools that they're currently attending. And then cost that out, because in order to cost it out, we're gonna need to see if there's an impact on the number of buses in order to make those routes viable, both in terms of the size of the bus as well as the number of buses. Once we do that, we feed the information into our template, and we get a cost comparison for for that iteration. Then we go-
Rich, can I just have you pause? Peter Dillon has his hand up, and it might be a timely question.
Okay.
No, thanks. It'll be a quick one, Rich. I don't know where Southern Berkshire is, but Berkshire Hills is in the process of rolling over all the data. If we're just doing this for ninth through 12th grade, and if we use last year's data, a quarter of it's gonna be wrong. Can we do this uniformly with next year's data, so it's it's more accurate?
Yes, we planned on doing it based on the 2223 student data. Usually, the the schools roll over their data, you know, pretty quickly after the after the end of the school period. So we're hoping that that's the case with with Berkshire Hills. I've been told that Southern Berkshire has already rolled over their data for next year. So we're planning on doing it based on next year's student base. Again, going back, we expect to get Iteration 3 done about the 4th of August. And then from there-
Can you just, Rich, describe what Iteration 3 is for people who don't recall?
Okay, Iteration 3 is all of the high school students to Monument, all of the middle and high school students attending the school that is closest in proximity to their residence.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Rich, one other question, and sorry to interrupt. One of the things I struggle with all the time is is we provide a space on a bus for every kid who could ride a bus. But in reality, many juniors and seniors drive themselves to school and almost never take the bus. And in any given athletic or theatrical season, for a whole semester, people aren't taking the bus because they're doing a late bus or getting picked up by parents. Can we use this deep dive as an opportunity to try to address the age-old issue of of we can offer a seat to everybody, but by not scheduling everybody for a seat, we could actually save quite a bit of of money?
The answer to your question is yes, because when we we look at our metrics, we look at both the scheduled load as well as the actual load per bus, along with the average mileage, average time on the bus. We look at the first pickup, we look at the last drop off. We develop all kinds of metrics to 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 mine what each route actually looks like. The other twist to what you're raising, Peter, is that the actual students who ride in the spring are somewhat different than the actual students who ride in the fall. The reason being is some people, some students play fall sports, some people play spring sports. And so the actual riders vary over the course of the year, but most dramatically between spring and fall. And so what that means is that when you look at your actual ridership, and let's just say that I don't know what it would look like until we see the routes, but let's just say your actual ridership is 50% of the seats on the bus, and your scheduled ridership may be as high as 80% of the of the seats on the bus. But typically, we've seen that you can over-schedule high school routes by as much as 110 to 120% on the scheduled side, and still only have maybe 60 to 75% of your seats being used on an actual basis. And the reason we don't over-schedule more than that is that you need capacity on the bus to manage the changes in ridership over the course of the year. Typically, the DESI standard and the the industry standard is that if you're between 73 and 75% of actual load capacity, you're highly efficient in what you're doing. You could never get to 100%, because then you can never manage changes without having to add a bus and add a driver, which no one ever wants to do in the middle of a budget year. So anyway, going back to the schedule, I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I just said thank you for that answer.
Oh, okay. Iteration 3, we expect to get done by August 4th, August 5th. And we would expect to around or before August 12th to have a full presentation of findings and recommendations, including the cost comparisons of all the options. Our our target would be to give you a final report, draft report, within five days of that presentation, because I would expect that there will be questions asked as we present the findings and recommendations, and we may need time to to develop answers to some of those questions. So that's-
Rich, we would be, I think, very interested if if we could have the routes be more efficient in either context than than to create space or funding for for some additional after-school routes. We're running, in addition to athletics, we're running a pretty rough after-school program. And if instead of running 13 buses at at 2:45, we ran 11 and then ran another two at 5:00 or 5:30, that would that would meet a big need.
Yeah, Peter, we we do those efficiency studies all the time. It's a big, big part of the work that we do. I would reserve any judgment until I actually see what the routes look like.
Okay.
But if there are areas where we think we can increase efficiency without increase significantly increasing student time on buses, then we would make that recommendation. And when you're spending $508 a day per bus, you know, that's a lot of money out there to to reduce a bus. The caveat, though, would be being careful with regard to how you reduce a bus, because at 96% reimbursement, you get you get a cost savings in the first year, but it's a it's a minimal cost avoidance going forward. And typically, what I say to superintendents is if we're gonna look at reducing a bus, do you really need to save that amount of money the first year only? And that's and that's a business call for the superintendent, to the degree that they value the cost of one bus. But that's a discussion that we would have with each of the superintendents, probably individually, with regard to how the buses are being used, because Berkshire Hills runs multi-tier system, and Southern Berkshire runs primarily a single-tier system.
Right. I I wonder if we have an extended day, could we make an argument that the day's just long and the late bus continues to be reimbursed?
You can make the argument.
Whether they'll listen or not, I stepped into that.
But for what it's worth, the department, when they have issues or questions with regard to school district reimbursements under Chapter 71, they usually call me and ask me to go out to the district and take a look and see what's going on and and why the reimbursement may be, or request may be what it is. And oftentimes, there are valid reasons why districts are running as many buses as they are, as well as running buses with as few students as they do. And most of the most of it has to do with student time on buses. When you get up to a 60-minute drive on buses, you you don't want to have kids on buses more than 60 minutes if you can at all help it. The only district that I'm aware of that's running normally very long routes is Mohawk Trail, primarily because they have over 200 square miles of territory, and they run a single-tier system, and they have students on buses almost 90 minutes in some cases. But there's no other alternative, you know, to to get them from point A to point B.
Rich, thanks so much for the overview. John, I'll kick it back to you. I don't know if you want to entertain additional questions, or that was a great summary and very efficient.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody have any questions for Rich?
I have a question. You said there would have to be a change of bell times at Southern Berkshire, which I didn't understand, because if we're if we're merging the two high schools in Great Barrington, wouldn't the bell times necessarily be the same for all the students on that single campus?
Not necessarily, because the the buses that would be used to pick up their middle school and elementary school, assuming that the elementary and the middle schools become the second tier, a high school would be would be the first tier. There needs to be amount of time for the buses to get from Great Barrington back to the first stops in Southern Berkshire. And so when you when you factor in that deadhead time between the first tier and the second tier, it's probably gonna require a change in the bell schedule for the middle school and the elementary school. I say probably, I won't know that until we actually do the routing and see, but we anticipate that going to a two-tier system will require a change in bell schedule.
Got it. Thank you.
It may not be much. It may be maybe only 10 or 15 minutes, but we're gonna work backwards from the route to determine what the optimum bell schedule should be.
Rich, I just have one clarification. When you said 90% reimbursement, what are we talking about?
Under under Chapter 71, which is the regional state aid for school transportation, the regional districts received last year 90, a little over 96% reimbursement on their expenditures that were approved under Schedule 7 of the End of the Year Report, which means that you get reimbursed for, you know, most of your students that live outside of a mile and a half from school.
Okay. So again, just for clarification, is that the same number that we all talk about being grossly inadequate when we talk about state funding for 100% reimbursement for-
The legislation said under Chapter 71 that school districts would be reimbursed 100% of the cost of regional transportation, subject to appropriation. And the legislature has never appropriated enough money to do 100%, but the 96 is probably the highest that it's been in the last 10 or 12 years that I'm aware of. Usually, it's around 85 to 89% reimbursement.
Yeah, okay, that's why I was asking, because I this has been a much more serious problem in the past.
Yeah, it has been. But I will say that I've been told by the department that they'll never go to 100% reimbursement, because then there's absolutely no reason for school districts to be efficient in transportation. But they are working, well, that doesn't affect regionals, but there there is a new legislative appropriation to help municipal schools become reimbursed. And the idea is that because it's a separate appropriation, it will not detract from the amount of money being put into Chapter 71. It'll be in addition to that to help out municipal school districts. And as such, those of you that see the End of the Year Reports will see a new Schedule 7 for the End of the Year Report, or this year for last year. We were retained by the Department of Ed last summer to redo Schedule 7 to allow an embedded reimbursement formula for the department. But that's neither here nor there, since you're both regionals, it's not gonna affect either either of you.
Hey, great. Thank you very much. Jake, I think you're still on if you've got anything else.
Yeah, not not much. I just had put on the agenda that we continue to add to the frequently asked questions. So if there are particular questions that you're hearing from your constituents or you have yourself, Lucy and I have been on a mad tour of the select boards in towns and doing it. We did an additional senior center event this week, so I have to be honest with you, they've been incredibly productive conversations. I have to be honest with you, these, they've been incredibly, um, productive conversations, um, with those individuals who have attended. Um, last night we were in, we're in Monterey, tonight we're virtually, um, uh, in New Marlboro. But, um, the reason I'm raising that is because we have generated another set of additional questions. Some of those are nuanced questions off the FAQs, some are unique questions, so I'll just continue to add to those. So I just want to make sure that the subcommittee was, uh, aware that we continue to grow those, so don't be shy about sending them along. And then, John, the only other issue that I wanted to make sure that the subcommittee was aware of, um, was that we did talk a little bit about special education at the last meeting as an operational function. We did discuss that last week at the education subcommittee, or two weeks ago, education subcommittee. And there was agreement that special education would be rolled into the ed visioning work on the education subcommittee side. So, um, we will be digging into how we're going to tackle that on the education subcommittee side, but I just wanted to follow up. Very, um, you know, letting y'all know that, um, that's where it's likely going to land.
So we're completely off the hook or partially off the hook or?
Well, I, I certainly think there are going to be things that we probably can dig into at some point, um, related to special education. If we decide to look at, you know, facilities used to create a, a day program or alternative education space, uh, that certainly would fall under facilities and operations, in, in my opinion. So, um, I think we're still a little bit of distance away from that, but, um, but we have a lot of ed visioning work that's really in process. I put together a, a roadmap that we got about halfway through with the last meeting. We meet next week, um, I think on the 20th. So if folks are interested in tuning into that, um, the education subcommittee is just going to continue to discuss those, um, uh, those ed visioning, you know, plans forward.
And, uh, we have, we have collected the data and will be, uh, including in our routing, uh, the in-district special education.
Great.
So we will have that, that data available if, if it's needed.
Great, thank you.
So I'm, I'm almost embarrassed to say we have, uh, a generous amount of time left. Uh. Um, I do have public comment on the agenda for next. I don't know if we have any members of the public, but does anybody have anything they want to talk about?
We have three attendees, John.
Great. I don't see, oh, I see. Any, any questions, comments from the public? Okay, there being none. I'm almost afraid to say this, but should I entertain a motion to adjourn to give you guys some time to prepare for your six o'clock meeting?
Can I just add, can I just add one thing before you adjourn?
Sure.
If, if members of the, of, of the planning group, uh, or subcommittee, uh, have questions with regard to process or the iterations that we're looking at, if you can get those to Jake sooner than later, uh, it'll give us, as, as we're rolling out the routing and scheduling, uh, we can incorporate and, and at least, uh, address those answers as opposed to waiting till we do finding the recommendations at the end and then have to go back, uh, and readjust things or, or look for answers. So the sooner we get, you know, pertinent questions, the better.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so once again, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion from Tara and second from Steve. I'll take roll call. George?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Molly, you're here now?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Night, all.
Thanks.
Recording stopped.